Good evening, everyone. Before we get started, would you mind standing up for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, hello. Good evening. My name is Katie Coras. I'm the New Lennox Council of Teachers President, and thank you all for coming tonight. We appreciate it very much. And we appreciate all of you coming as well, our candidates for our school board, and thank you for volunteering your time to do, to try out for this position. So, we appreciate it. Thank you. And what we're going to do tonight, we're going to go ahead and give you some questions to answer. But first, we had asked you to prepare a bit of a statement to tell us about yourselves that you hopefully brought with you. And on that, we had sent out invitations for this, and we put out these questions for our candidates to answer. So, if we could start with maybe Mr. Adair.
Good evening. Boy, the voice carries a little bit here. I have to stand back. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Ms. Cole Ross and the Teachers Council for the invite here to this evening. My name is Phil Adair. I've been a resident of New Lennox Township for the last forty-five years. I've been involved with the community through various organizations, St. Jude's, the New Lennox Baseball Association, the New Lennox Mustangs, where I've been involved for the last thirty-eight years with them. So, I've been pretty involved with the community. In 2011, I ran the first time for a school board member, but I was unfortunately not selected. And then in 2013, I ran again, and I was happy and lucky to be on the board. So, it's been a great experience for me. I've enjoyed it every minute. We've had a little turmoil through the first couple of years, but things settled down. And with the, I have to say, I'm very happy with the leadership of the present superintendent. So, she has done a great job in leading the board and with the direction of the board. The school district has been able to save some money through the years. The last time we faced a, some cuts, and we were able to achieve over, close to $3 million in cuts. So, we're looking out for the taxpayer, and we're also looking out for the children because none of those cuts really affected anything in the curriculum. So, our first objective is always to protect the kids and look out for the community. So, we have done that, and I've been happy to have been part of that. So, I would like to run again to continue that. My specific, more or less, outlook is to continue what we've been doing in the way of improving the school district. We have incorporated iPads in the school district during my term, and now we have a racial, more or less, two to one in iPads for the kids. And in kindergarten, each one of the kids has an iPad, so we're bringing them along technology-wise for the 2000 and on years. So, that would be very helpful. Again, I think that with, with what we've done in the way of iPads, we are going to continue that. So, that, along with keeping an eye on the cost of running the district, I think I'm pretty happy with that. Yes, there can be some additional costs and savings, but we don't want to have that interfered with the students in the curriculum that we have. So, again, I'm very grateful to serve on the board under, excuse me, Peggy Manville. So, Dr. Manville has done a great job in the leadership of the board, and I look forward to running again. So, I thank one and all for coming out here this evening, and I hope to have your vote in April. So, thank you very much.
For a lot of you that don't know me, again, my name's Teresa Berkey. I want to thank everybody for, the Teachers Council for putting this together. This is a really great opportunity for you guys to get to know us. So, I think that's definitely a great way to start this. I, this is obviously my first bid for the school board. And for those of you who don't know me, I am a product myself of District 122. Went first through eighth grades here in New Lennox and graduated from Lincoln Way. So, I'm familiar from, you know, the late eighties and nineties, but nonetheless. And then currently, I have, my two nephews and my niece are enrolled in the district at the Spencer Campus and Cherry Hill, respectively. So, I've gotten to see over the past few years what goes on, how the district has evolved and how some of our schools are. It was, it's nice to see the different campuses, because back when I was in the district, we just had Tyler and Bentley on the junior highs. So, and now my junior high has turned into an elementary school. So, the changes are fun. It's nice to see New Lennox evolving. So, I'm familiar, I've lived in New Lennox most of my life. I did take a brief hiatus out to the East Coast for undergrad, but then I came back, and I plan to stay here forever. My fiance and I have decided to make New Lennox our home, so I'm definitely a townie. And I like to be involved in the community. So, that's why I'm running. And I like to be involved in as many ways possible. So, currently, I'm volunteering with our Cub Scout Pack, which is great. Get to hang out with the little boys. And I am a co-chair of Witch's Night Out, if anyone's heard of that. We have this ridiculously fantastic costume fundraiser. A thousand women that dresses witches, and it's fantastic. So, we've got that. And then, and I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce here and a local business owner. I run a law practice with an office in Joliet and then one here, just opening up in Atrium Point, so that's fun. We'll have a ribbon cutting soon. So, yeah, I'm wanting to get involved in as many ways as I can, especially, like I said, I've got a vested interest in the Little Berkeys that are going to be benefiting from what the board does going forward. So, my goals basically are to continue the fantastic work that the district's been doing. The teachers are great. I've gotten to see it firsthand. The administration's doing a great job. And if we make our goal to continue to be, to continue on the path that we're on with great education and increasing the technology and keeping up with the times and doing it in a fiscally responsible manner, that keeps everybody happy. Because we've got to have, keep the high level of education that we're providing to our students while being responsible to the taxpayers. So, that's definitely something I think we need to obviously keep pushing toward, and I'd love to be a part of making that happen going forward. And I could talk about myself and all of these things all night, but I am not going to bore you, because we'll have more specific questions soon. So, thank you.
My name is Al Herring, and I am running for a position on the New Lennox School District 122 School Board. I've lived and worked in the New Lennox community for over thirty-five years. My wife Linda and I have had three children who have attended and graduated from this district. As a member of the school board, should I be elected, my role would be to work collaboratively with the other board members to assist in guiding the district through its future challenges. In addition, I would communicate my thoughts and ideas in a respectful way while representing community members. Whether I agree with the decisions of the board or not, I would support them as part of the District 122 team. I was inspired to run for the board when it was suggested to me on a couple of occasions by various acquaintances that I should consider it. After learning that two of the incumbents, Sue Smith and Pat Martino, were contemplating not seeking reelection, I decided to step up to the plate. I felt, based on my observations of them at board meetings, that I could come close to being like them as I gained experience. I believe I bring several positive traits to the board that I consider to be strengths. I believe if you spoke with my former coworkers, they would say that I was a good listener with an open mind who listens to all sides of an issue before making a decision. I was involved in education for thirty-five years, so I have, I've had firsthand experience with many of the issues schools face. I enjoy working cooperatively with others, and I really enjoy when the students get acknowledged for the good things that they do. My goals, should I be elected, are to work with the other board members in moving our district forward as it tackles current and future issues, to continue moving the district in a good direction, and as much as possible, to be seen and not heard. I think that overall, the district continues to show good financial judgment and make good financial decisions. I think the district has kept financial cuts as far from the classroom as possible or away from the classroom as long as possible. I think the district has been proactive on issues that many schools face. For example, creating a ten-year rotation that addresses the maintenance and upkeep of facilities. I think there is a strong staff of people who care about students. I think the district has strived to keep up technologically in the classroom by phasing in specific hardware and programs that enhance, not replace, instruction in the classroom. The improvements that I think are needed are mostly related to facilities. I believe there remains some equipment and buildings that have long since passed their usefulness or effectiveness. I would like to see those updated as quickly as possible. I am encouraged by the aforementioned ten-year rotation plan and would like to see it through. I know there's only so much money to go around, so the challenge remains to balance the needs of the students with the upkeep of the facilities. I've been encouraged and pleased with how the current board has functioned. While I do not believe a school member should be a lifer, I believe that when a school board is running smoothly and there are a majority of seats whose term is up, I think it is wise to retain experience. I am not running as part of any ticket or slate. However, I would like to suggest that current school board members, Rhonda Starkloff and Phil Adair, be reelected to keep the continuity of progress that the current board, that the current board has been making. The loss of Sue and Pat will be a lot of experience to overcome. In closing, I would like to thank the New Lennox Council of Teachers for hosting this event and for giving me and the other candidates the opportunity to participate in it. I would also like to say that I am encouraged by the number of candidates running for the school board. I believe it is, once again, indicative of the support the community has for our schools. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank the American Federation of Teachers, Local 604, for putting this on. My name is Chad Hall, and I'm running for New Lennox District 122 School Board. I've been a resident in New Lennox for over twenty years. I've raised two children here in New Lennox, both of whom attend District 122 schools. My oldest is currently a sophomore at Lincoln Way West, and my youngest is in eighth grade at Liberty Junior High and is graduating this spring. When my kids were younger, I coached several different sports, volunteering for the New Lennox Park District, in-house baseball, and travel baseball. I coached flag football and basketball through the Park District. I helped coach the New Lennox Rebels baseball for a couple of seasons, and when my son got older, I helped also coach his travel team. So, odds are, a few parents here might recognize me, because I've probably coached some of your kids. I actually come from a family of educators. My stepmom has been a parochial school teacher for more than thirty-five years. My two brothers are also educators. My middle brother is a special education teacher with a transition program at Southwest Cook County Co-op. My youngest brother, my baby brother, who recently graduated college, has his first teaching job nearby at Homer Hadley Middle School. So, I can understand the time invested to students and schools by the educators. I, myself, didn't take the educator route. I took the route of my father and became a plumber. I'm actually a third-generation plumber. I've been a State of Illinois Licensed Journeyman Plumber for twenty-five years. I'm a vested and current member of Plumbers Union Local 130. Although plumbing is my trade, I am familiar with many aspects of the construction industry. My first home here in New Lennox, like many other young adults moving to the area in the early nineties, was an owner-completion home sold by the old lumberyard on Cedar Road. My second home here in town, which happens to be my dream home, I built and general contracted from the ground up. I still live in that home to this day. With my construction experience, I feel I would be an asset to the District 122 School Board. With the board mostly consisting of bankers and lawyers and business professionals, not that there's anything wrong with bankers and lawyers, I feel I would offer a fresh set of thoughts and ideas towards the school board decisions. Having twelve schools in our district, four of which are more than forty years old, there will be several major improvement projects very soon, including new roofs at Bentley and Tyler this summer and the HVAC systems in four schools in the near future. With the proposed $60 million over the next ten years in capital improvements and the pending retirement of District's Director of Facilities and Planning, Mr. Bob Nelson, I feel that my construction experience would not only be a huge asset to the ideas and decisions of the school board, but also aid in the pending decision of finding Mr. Nelson's replacement. Thanks again to the Teachers Union for giving me the opportunity and all of us the opportunity to tell about ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you for the Teachers Union for putting this on tonight. My name is David Rush, and I am the parent of two children who attend Spencer Point in the New Lennox School District. My wife and I are both teachers in the area. I am a fifth-grade teacher, and this is my thirteenth year of teaching, actually, at Hadley Middle School with Chad's brother. I also have two masters. I have a Type 75 Administration and a Reading Specialist Masters. We specifically chose, when we were moving five years ago, to move to New Lennox because of the reputation of the district, both the elementary and the high school districts. As a parent, a community member, and a possible future school board candidate, I'm sorry, school board member, I believe that the Board of Education can have a great influence on a school district. I was inspired to run for the school board after my school district just went through a huge contract negotiation. I saw firsthand the importance that a Board of Education can have with working collaboratively with the teachers and the administrators. By serving on the board, excuse me, I will hopefully be able to support the staff, the students, and the community. In my role as a board member, I would plan on listening to the needs of the staff and the community and make informed decisions that would kind of center on what is best for the students in the district. My qualifications to help me serve as a school board member would be that I have been involved in education for thirteen years as a fifth-grade teacher and also a junior high wrestling coach. I've seen decisions that school boards have made, and they can have positive impacts and also negative impacts on a school and a district. By working at school, I feel like I will bring a great perspective on how this, excuse me, I believe that the New Lennox School District is a fantastic school district with a great reputation, which, again, is why I chose to move here five and a half years ago. It sets high curricular expectations for the students. The staff does a great job with motivating the students and educating them, and the district has been adapted to the ever-changing landscape of education over the years. I want to see that the district maintains its prestigious reputation in the area. My goal would be, as a school board member, to continue to be one of the top elementary districts in the area and to improve and adapt with the educational changes that will be coming in the constantly changing world of education. I want to be supportive of the students, the teachers, and administrators, and give them all the best opportunity to be successful in our district. I realize with the uncertainty of state funding, there are going to be challenges. However, by working as a team with the board, current, future board members, administrators, teachers, we continue to support all of our young learners. Some strengths that I see in our district are the ability to use, the ability to use data to improve student growth and instruction. I see the tests that my first and third graders come home with, all the reports they come home with, Terranova testing, MAP testing, access testing, and I see how well their teachers use this data to direct their instruction at a differentiated level to meet their needs, but it also meet the needs of all the other students in their classroom. I like the fact that neither of my children have over twenty-five kids in their classes, and this helps to ensure that they have more individualized instruction than larger classes would have. I currently have thirty-one students in my class. I also love the fact that they have access to many online resources and other subscriptions that help my children learn at home and also at school. They frequently come home and ask to get on the computer to play, you know, whatever they have, Reflex Math, things like that. So, they're also wanting to learn at home. The only improvement I'd like to see is the implementation of more, more technology in the classrooms, which I know has been advanced over the years. In my classroom, we currently have one-to-one Chromebook ratio, and it's done nothing but help advance my students' online abilities and allows them to have access to, access and utilize information that helps them with all sorts of curricular concepts and skills. Like I stated earlier, I have a, currently have a third-grade son and a first-grade daughter at Spencer Point. They've both had wonderful teachers since they entered the pre-K program. They've done a great job, helped them grow socially, academically, and physically, and I'd like to thank all the teachers that are here that taught my, my children, as well as all the teachers in the district, for everything they do every day for the students. Thank you.
I'm Rhonda Starkloff, and I too am a product of 122. I graduated from Oakview Junior High, and I've lived in New Lennox pretty much my whole life. I now work in New Lennox, and I've been on the school board for four years. I'm seeking reelection this April 4th. And over the course of the four years, you know, I was thinking about all the stuff that we've done and accomplished, and it really was nice to kind of sit and reflect on all of that. And one of the things I value most was how much I learned, you know, about all of the different intricacies that are necessary to effectively run a school. And, you know, four years ago, I really would not have guessed, you know, to how much it really involves. You know, it's, it's not just the curriculum's taught, you know, but it's the operation of the buildings, it's the nursing staff, it's the resource staff, it's the secretaries that make each office run smoothly, you know, and it's all of those different components that I know lead to a successful school district and which we're fortunate to be a part of. I also know, you know, that being on the board, you need board members that are willing to work with one another and work with administration to develop goals and policies that keep, you know, our students' best interests in mind, you know, that should be at the forefront of it all. And in doing so, though, you do have to sit and prioritize different budget items and make sure that the ones that you are putting at the top of the list, you know, are the ones that are really important. And some of the other ones sometimes unfortunately get pushed to the bottom, but it is the school board's role in working with one another and the administration to make sure that these are prioritized in, you know, a way, again, that most benefits the students. I chose to run for reelection for many reasons. First of all, you know, I, with my two sons in the district, I see all the hard work that everyone, you know, administration, teachers, staff, everyone puts forward, and, you know, we are fortunate, and I want to see it continue to produce such high-quality education for our learners. Second, we have done a great job over the past couple of years maintaining consistent operating costs and have been able to reinvest in our schools through our summer improvement projects every year, and this is something that I definitely hope to see continue. For me, finally, the, probably the most important reason that I'm running is, as was mentioned earlier, you know, over the next couple of years, not only will we have to replace our facilities and maintenance director, but we also will have to replace our superintendent, and those are really big shoes to fill. And so, I think, you know, in my time on the board the past four years, we did successfully and pretty seamlessly transition a new superintendent in as well as a new business manager, and they were great fits. Everything was as perfect as it could be, and I believe my experience with these transitions and understanding the value of creating a team of administrators who mesh well together will benefit our district in the future. In terms of my experience, I too am an educator, an educator. I have over sixteen years of experience, so there's much I can offer in terms of the planning and implementation of policies that ensures the educational success of our children. My goals in terms of, you know, curriculum are, again, just being able to provide our students with a rigorous curriculum that is there to prepare them for the future. I know we have upcoming textbook and other series adoptions, and, you know, I find it really important to make sure that these support the technology that we've been using, align with the standards, and most importantly, probably focus on the skills that we really want our students to leave these schools with. With all the recent changes made in the standardized testing, as, you know, I've been impressed with our teachers and our staff's ability to embrace these changes, you know, with implementation of PARC and the science test last year and the new digits program in math and, you know, I've seen so many pictures on Facebook and stuff of all the STEM activities that the math and science have incorporated into their curriculum. You know, the bottom line is education's constantly changing, and our district is changing with it, and that's something that I would like to see continue, you know, especially if I'm reelected. As Phil mentioned, you know, the other wonderful accomplishment that we've done is increasing the iPad usage. You know, you walk through our schools at any point, and you're going to see kids actively engaged, and, you know, and this technology that we have is really enhancing their learning experience. Another great thing about our school district is the work that we have done over the past couple of years on our buildings, you know, as Alice said, it is important to keep them updated, and we've done a great job trying to make them more equitable. You know, we have older buildings, we have newer buildings, and we've seen, you know, Tyler get new floors and have their library now safely enclosed, you know. I think that was important. They were the only school that didn't have that. Nelson got some new flooring, you know, or Oakview got wonderful classroom renovations. The lights in there are amazing, you know, but all these different things, and I think it's important that we take care of these improvements and that we can't stop focusing on those. We have old buildings, you know, and I would rather be proactive than reactive in their maintenance. I don't want to see any of these improvements get placed on the back burner, you know, because when we have our budget cuts, a lot of time, our budget conversations, a lot of times, they are. But unfortunately, speaking of the budget, you know, the State of Illinois is kind of leaving the schools in a little bit of limbo currently, but I do have faith in the fact that whatever happens, whatever bills may be passed, that our school board and our administration will work to make the best decisions for our students in our district. So, in closing, I want to thank the New Lennox Council of Teachers for providing us with the opportunity tonight. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me with questions and concerns as I ask for your support on April 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your responses, and we've prepared some questions that we're going to ask you to respond to as well, and we're going to turn it over to Ms. Anne Klein, our Vice President, to do that. Thanks.
Well, welcome. Thank you again for telling us a little bit about yourselves. It was wonderful to hear what your visions are and just a little bit more about you. So, thank you very much again. What we'll do tonight with our questions is, there will be a question posed, and each member or each candidate will have two minutes to answer that question. We will have a fifteen-second warning when you're getting close to that two-minute response time, and then we will just kind of go down the row and have you answer the questions that we pose. So, Mr. Adair, if we could start with you, yep, we could pass down the microphone, that would be awesome. And if you need the question repeated, it will, we will keep it up on the screen, but if you need it repeated, I could repeat that for you as well. So, our first question of the night, how does a school board balance the responsibility of providing quality education while being mindful of taxpayers? Mr. Adair?
Well, that's, that's, that's a question that's faced with every board, every governmental agency that, to make this balance, and so, my first concern is always the students, but, you know, sometimes there might be a cut what we've done in the past. We decreased some teachers' aides and library aides, I should say, and that, in its sense, saved some money, but it didn't affect the students. So, is there a formula? No, but you, what you have to do on a consensus is you talk about it at the board, you listen to various ideas, and you reflect that, is this going to affect the students? And then you have that hard choice. And again, my concern, being a senior citizen, is naturally about saving money for the taxpayers as I'm on a fixed budget, but I realize the importance of education. I put two sons through the school district, both of them attaining high honors and all the way through grade school, high school, and on to college. So, I, I know the value of education, and that's my prime concern, is to make sure that all our kids are prepared for the future, and to do that, you have to make sometimes some hard choices, but again, my first choice is to protect the kids. Okay, did I get the buzzer?
No, you did good.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Berkey?
Well, I think the first step in balancing the responsibilities that any school board has is making sure that the board has all the information possible, because information's constantly changing. So, the building maintenance... So, the building maintenance, that the buildings, you know, if something is, falls into disrepair, that changes constantly. So, just constantly reevaluating the budget, reevaluating what's going on. And with the changing technology, it's a constant struggle, I would suggest, to be on top of making sure that you are meeting the needs and giving the best education to the kids possible and then being mindful of the taxpayers. You can't, you can't balance those responsibilities without having all the information possible. So, I would suggest that it's being aware, just like how we balance our households. You know, you have certain goals and you need to balance them all and see what money you're working with, what your budget is, and making sure that you're making the best possible choices with the goals in mind of making sure that we are giving the best possible education to our kids so they can be productive members of society later, but also making sure that we recognize that we, we have to pay for that and we're asking the rest of the community to pay for that as well. So, iPads, it would be great to have one-to-one ratios and if it's affordable, amazing, but we can't take that. And I would like to make clear that I do completely support all the technology. It's amazing to see the kids using those. But balance that with, well, they can't use iPads in buildings that are crumbling. So, just being constantly aware of what is going on in every facet of the district and all the buildings and the administration and assessing and coming to terms as a board with what is the best way to proceed to make sure that we are still successful years from now, not just, not just one year from now, 20, 30 years from now. So, thank you.
I could sum it up and say, and not really trying to be smug, but say very carefully, you want to obviously scrutinize the budget and the annual financial report as best you can. You want to, as a lot of what's been said already, you want to ask for ideas, suggestions. You know, the reality is, on, on the tax bill, the, the school districts are the largest amount that comes out of our taxes. So, you want to, you want to remember that you're accountable to the community, but at the center of everything, you want to have the kids. You want to make sure, it doesn't mean they have to have the best of everything, but you want to make sure they don't have, they're not behind in anything, whether that's software, technology, aides, teach, whatever that might be in this certain situation, you want to keep them as your focus. So, that would be my response.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Like Phil said, it's kind of the age-old question. Nobody wants to pay high taxes, but you want quality schools. So, you're, you're going to. I honestly think maxing the tax levy every year, as bad as that sounds, the, the benefits outweigh the small savings you're going to get on your tax bill. You got, like, everybody has said so far, you got to have quality schools. If you don't have a quality school, your property value is going to go down and it's a snowball effect. So, the, the age-old adage of living within your means kind of always comes to my mind. You know, if you spend more than you make, you go in debt. And debt is bad, plain as simple as that. So, just keep spending in mind and kind of go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Rush?
I think I'm going to echo the other candidates where, and especially Mr. Hall, saying that, you know, taxes, I've been a homeowner for 13 years and I've never had my taxes go down. So, not yet anyway. So, like you said, with tax increases, I think that's something that I come to expect every year. And if that means a quality education for my children, then, you know, so be it. I think one way to possibly provide, provide quality education is just prioritize the needs, whether it is technology, you know, capital improvements, things like that. But again, the end-all being that the success of the students and, you know, their future is what we're pushing towards and what we're trying to achieve.
Thank you. Mrs. Starclough?
Again, I'm going to piggyback off of many things that have been said, but we all know, you know, we heard it already tonight, that people move here for the schools. And so, it is definitely our responsibility to make sure that that quality of education doesn't drop, you know, that, that's why they're here. Is it difficult to balance that responsibility? Absolutely. But we do have to prioritize and we do have to keep it as far away from, you know, the classroom as we possibly can. In the time that I've been on the board, you know, it does amaze me how creative people can get when given the opportunity to sit and discuss some things too. So, sometimes that's what you have to do, you know, you have to get a little creative with, if you're going to make cuts or, you know, where your priorities lie. And that's the benefit of having seven people on a board with different views and, and different strengths, you know, that they can bring to the table. One of the things that I know that, that New Lennox does that is really beneficial is to reevaluate our five-year forecast, you know, twice a year, every six months, because that does keep us informed and let us know any changes or, you know, possible problems that we may have to do to adjust our budget or to, you know, make cuts if necessary. So, that's something that I would definitely want to see continue. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Starclough. We will move to our next question. The tax levy was recently passed by our school board. How would you have voted on this tax levy and why? And if you are a current board member, how did you vote for the tax levy and why? And Ms. Burkey, could we start with you, please?
If I was on the board, I would have voted for the tax levy. We need the money and I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody else does, but I feel that it's, it's, it's better to just have it there. We run very, the board is well-managed, the district is well-managed, and I'd like to keep it that way. And I don't ever anticipate, like you said, your tax bill's never gone down. Yeah, it's not going to. I'm, I'm okay with that, I know that. I deal with it all the time and tell people, well, you know, your escrow account, it's probably never going to change. Every day, we have these talks. I'd rather spend the money, keep it there instead of having to come back and, nobody likes to have, have all the street, the signs out in yards about referenda and can we do this? Let's, it's easier to just have it, have the tax levy be where it's at than ask for more money later when something big comes up. So, I support it if I was on the board, I would have voted for it.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
I would have voted for it, excuse me. I would rather have the money stay here locally than go outside of our community. So, I would rather have higher local taxes than state or federal taxes. And if that means voting yes on the levy at its max, like Mr. Hall stated, the, the cost analysis, it's, it's not a great decision to have to choose between, but I would err on the side of always having the school have the maximum amount of money it could have as opposed to reducing my taxes a little bit, which I know are going to be going up probably total anyway. So, I, I would vote for the levy. I mean, unless there was some scenario that was so extreme, but as I've seen over the years, I haven't seen that. So, yeah, I would vote for the levy.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I kind of answered his question in the last one, but I think, obviously, like I said before, I would, because it, the benefits outweigh the small savings you would see on your tax bill. Like I said before, it stinks to pay the high taxes. Every time I open my tax bill in the spring, you know, it's like, oh, time to sell the house. No, of course not. I love it here in New Lennox, but it makes you think that. I think something else to think about too is the scariness coming out of Springfield, the proposed permanent property tax freeze. You would end up having to go another route of finding different funding for schools and that would be catastrophic for New Lennox. We need to keep our money local. That's what's great about it out here. And like I said, and everybody said too, yes, we pay high taxes, but we have great schools.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Yes, I would have voted for it also. Like Mr. Hall said, with the mess that is the Illinois state budget or lack of budget, you know, the local schools are funded by tax levies and by the property taxes, so they're necessary to maintain our reputation as a great district in the area. If the state isn't providing it, it's got to be provided by the local taxes, which the tax levy will obviously help to, to get.
Thank you. Mrs. Starclough?
I voted yes for the tax levy. Again, it is a consistent form of revenue that we can rely on, you know, and without that, it makes creating a budget a little bit more difficult and, you know, it is scary to think about the state taking that away, especially as the state has decreased the funding to us, you know. So, not only are they decreasing funding, but they're saying that they might take our local funding away. So, that would pose an even greater problem for the previous question that we could go back to. But as everyone has said, absolutely, I would continue to vote yes for the tax levy to maintain our schools and keep them like they are.
Thank you. Yes, if we could pass that down to Mr. Adair?
Who? Yes, I voted for the tax levy this time. It's a, it always hits you as to making that decision, should you save some, just some money right now and it's not long-lasting, it's just a one-year gain. But if you look at how we run the schools in the district, I, I think that with the small increase that we've seen recently, and that has been held in check by the CPI, which has helped in a way. So, we also get hit, if, if you've looked at your tax bill, your assessed evaluation also went up. So, that's something that we, as a school board, have nothing, no control of. So, you marry that and you look at how much savings you would really achieve by not voting on the levy. I think it's small and it's temporary. Again, you, you also like to think that you're going to save the taxpayers some money, but I think a bigger question is what has happened in state funding. Back in 2004 and prior, in fact, go back into the, when the state constitution was approved and it was put into the constitution, that school funding should be in the area of around 40%. Well, if you look at what we get for state funding from the, from the state, we're down in the area of 20%. We, we fund our schools with, close to 80% is done by property taxes. Can I have extra time? Well, that, you don't mark that time off, okay? But I think a bigger problem is we have to grow the economy too, to get additional commercial and industrial property in the district so that could help offset the, the increase in the homeowners. So, did I make it? They got any time left?
Thank you, Mr. Adair. Our third question, Mr. Herring, if you could start this one out for us. As a district, what are the two most significant resources we can provide to help students be successful in the classroom?
Well, I think first and foremost would be the people, the teachers. Having quality teachers, having enough teachers so that, you know, we don't have classes of 40, that it's, it's a manageable number. And I think, unfortunately, I'm, I think the second one comes back to making sure there are enough financial resources to acquire what is needed for the students, that they have an updated reading series or an updated math series, that they have clean classrooms, good facilities to work in. They don't have to worry about a leaky roof or a window that's falling apart. So, I would say staff, people, because I think ultimately that's what it's all about, learning to live with everybody, socialization, and then having the facilities, the, the financial resources to support that.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
First and foremost is the educators. Quality educators and small class sizes are beneficial to everyone, really. And secondly, being, I always kind of tend to go back to my construction side, the quality of the schools. You know, the aging schools we have, the maintenance, the upkeep, having a school that's rundown, like you said, leaking roofs, drafty windows, air conditioner going out, it brings everybody's quality of education down. So, you know, having the right financing and everything for all these construction projects is beneficial and will be beneficial for this, this district.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
I'm going to also agree with everyone else here that, obviously, being a teacher, I think that one of the most significant resources we can provide is teachers, high-quality teachers, you know, getting in, teachers that are passionate about helping children learn and, you know, being able to implement curriculum in lots of different and creative ways. Second resource I would say would be just, and it can be many different ways, but just support for the children, whether it's children who need to be pushed more and have their lessons or the curriculum enriched for them, or whether it's struggling students who need, you know, a reading specialist or a math interventionist to help them so that if they are struggling, they can, you know, get back up and catch up with their peers. Also, a support might be, or a resource might be the technology, you know, and also online resources, like I mentioned earlier, all the extra programs that my children have, it helps them at home when they get done and they want to learn Math Facts on Reflex Math. They can get on there and learn that at home and not have to be with their teacher in front of them teaching them a lesson or a concept.
Thank you, Mrs. Starclough.
Well, I wrote teachers and resources as well, as Mr. Herring was stealing it before me. So, but then I was thinking about it, you know, and in terms of resources, I don't think that that just implies, you know, carries to the students. I think it's for the teachers as well and, you know, we have to be able to provide significant training, staff development, you know, as all of these changes do continually happen in education. We already have phenomenal teachers, you know, but, I mean, I know in the 16 years that I've been in the classroom that a lot has changed. And without that staff development and those learning opportunities for the teachers, that's not going to carry over to the students. So, I think that's pretty significant as well. And then, again, with the resources, originally my mind went to technology, but I know we've also done a great job with making sure that the technology isn't guiding our entire curriculum. You know, we still need those bodies. So, even that though, we need to train teachers in the technology that we're implementing. So, it's kind of like a big cycle of, of providing the resources for the students and the teachers to make that the most successful classroom that we have.
Thank you. You'll need to turn that on, Mr. Adair.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Two most significant resources. Well, naturally, as everyone has said, teachers. I like to be a brown-noser and, you know, I, I do appreciate what the teachers have, are doing and what they have done. Being on the board, I see this and I am really grateful and thankful for the, the great job that the teachers are doing, really. That's, I see it more than when my kids were in school, but then I was working and traveling from Minnesota down to Mexico, so I couldn't get involved as much as I wanted to, but I did toe the line at home on education, which then I believe in is a, a big part of, to have a successful school, is to have the parent involvement. If you don't have parent involvement and the teach, and the parents buy into what we're trying to do here and provide that support at home, you know, no matter what we do here, it's sort of not going to happen. As you look at the school situation in the city of Chicago and some of the impoverished areas, you see the, the low test scores in, in in, in that, and, uh, it's just, uh, horrible to see what these kids are, are looking forward to in their future. So, they have, you know, the broken home scenario. So, uh, I believe that the parents are one of the most important criteria, as again, um, I come from the old school, and, uh, I, uh, carried a big stick with my kids as to, um, what education meant, and, uh, they responded, and they loved education, and they have been successful in their adult lives. And, uh, so I'm very grateful for all the teach...huh? You didn't interrupt anybody else? What kinda clock you got over there? So, in closing, though, again, um, teachers and parents, I, I think are the nucleus to having a successful school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burkey?
I definitely agree with Mr. Adair that your success in the classroom really does start at home. But once we send our young people to be with you guys, we need to make sure that our teachers are fantastic, and they are. You, it is amazing, and I don't know how you do it. I am in awe every single day, and when I've gone to, to events in the classroom, the level of involvement and how much the educators care is really, really impressive. Um, and I think part of that, too, is the tools that you have available. So, the, the reading books, you know, the, the, the stories that the kids read, and then you can go home and they can do more work online. Those are great tools, and if the teachers have great tools, then it's gonna be easier for them to be teaching. So, of course, the development and the ongoing education for the instructors themselves. But if they've got good resources and they're working with good materials, it, their job is so much easier. So, it's, I equate it kinda to happy wife, happy life. If the teachers have everything they need to make their job easier, then they're gonna be happier to do it. And that's really, kids need their, their leader during the day to be excited about what they're doing. And everything I've seen shows that our teachers are. And I think we're gonna keep 'em that way by giving them the tools they need. You know, not antiquated history books that, you know, still have the Soviet Union in them. Giving them the best technology, so they know that they're feeling good about what they're doing. And it is a circle, like Mrs. Starkoff said, you know. Keep everything, everything going, and it's all connected. So, but, teachers, great teachers that we've got, and then the resources to keep them doing their jobs well.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, our fourth question, if we can start with you. Given our recent technology initiatives, what is your vision for technology in our district?
The board has had a great start. The iPad initiative is incredible. Um, it's amazing what even little kids can do with technology. I mean, there's stuff, I mean, I'm in my forties. My nieces and nephews can do stuff on the computers that I have no clue what's going on. So, it's amazing. So, I, I really, I really do like the iPad initiative. Um, as for other technology, I mean, laptops would be wonderful. I'd still think, even from coming to past board meetings when they were talking about the iPads, iPad's better than laptops. But, um, I think keep the initiative going, and if finances, you know, warrant the one-to-one ratio, everybody have an iPad, it'd be wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Um, I also am fully supportive of technology in the classroom. Uh, I came to the last board meeting, and Mrs. or Dr. Cucci spoke about the gizmos and showed a presentation about all of the junior high science students using the gizmos to motivate them in the classroom. So, I thought it was, you know, great to, for them, a great way to motivate the students and not just have them sit there and listen to the teacher discuss it and teach them, and then stare at them with the blank stares. So, it got them involved and active. Um, I think one thing might be to have a systematic plan to implement, you know, a, a technology upgrade, like as you're going through the years, you know, what are you gonna do each year? So, have a system, have a plan, so you're not just jumping all in at once. Um, like I, I, like I said, I use, um, I have Google in my classroom, we have Chromebooks, and my kids are constantly on Google Classroom. I can put assignments up there, they can email it to me, they all have email accounts, so I think it's just, um, greatly beneficial for them. And like Mr. Hall said, they're very, very adaptive with it, and they learn it like that, and then, you know, they are able to use it, and it helps, you know, helps to ensure their success.
Thank you. Mrs. Starkoff?
We, um, I've been super impressed with our current iPad use, and like I said, in the times that I have been in the buildings, I've seen music classes, science classes, language arts classes, you know, using them, and I definitely wanna see that continue. Um, I also think it's important to find these valuable programs and apps, you know, if we're using the apps on the iPad, that continue to promote, like, higher-level learning. Um, and even, you know, as these standardized tests change, I would like to see our technology offer, you know, um, programs that help better prepare the students for the writing and the math that are on these standardized tests as well. Um, but what's great about, like, our digits is the differentiation that can, you know, happen there, that the learning that the students can do and the reinforcement that the students can have at home. So, I would love to see something like that, you know, for all curricular areas, not just with math. Um, and then, you know, with the implementation of the Google Classroom, I know that we've started out, um, slowly, you know, but that's good, because you don't wanna just, you know, have everyone doing everything. It gets a little overwhelming. And again, our teachers need to be trained and comfortable with all of this technology first, before we can see that successful, um, implementation into the classroom. So, I would like to see us continue to have the teacher training and the teachers feeling empowered before we, you know, push it into the classroom right away with the students. Um, but again, I'm so proud of our iPads and our two-to-one, you know. I, I definitely wanna see that continue, um, as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Adair, coming back down to you.
I'm ready. Um, not, okay. As I mentioned earlier, uh, about the iPads and everyone else has, um, diddled that, and I, I, I think that's been one of the great innovations, uh, for our students. Uh, for myself, it was a, a learning curve, because I was always a Microsoft guy, and getting an iPad was, I felt like I was back in first grade, and I've overcome that to some extent. So, uh, but the, the, the thinking of the value of, of, of the computer and what has, has brought to our students and, and the resources that are available on the computer and the integration with the teachers, as, uh, Mr. Rush has, uh, mentioned, um, these are great advancements. And, uh, as Mr. Rush also mentioned, and I wanted to say, and kudos to Dr. Cucci and her, her presentation at our last board meeting on the gizmos, for stemming involvement in our schools, which is taking on a bigger, bigger share of, of the learning that's gonna be taking place, because science and technology is, is the way to go here, and, um, for our students. So, um, I'm just a believer in, um, our teachers and, and being equipped to, uh, teach these courses. Uh, that's the important thing. And, uh, I look forward to, um, the continuing advancements of the technology that, uh, comes about and that we incorporate it into our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't get a warning there, did I?
Ms. Burkey?
The one-to-one iPad ratio in the kindergarten rooms is absolutely fantastic. And I was thinking to myself when I watched that presentation, you know, I bet you almost every single kid in that room has played with one and didn't need to be told how to turn it on, how to open apps, how to close them all. These kids all know what they're doing by the time they're five. And that's why we do need to keep pushing on this technology track that we're on, because we, it, not only does it help them learn in different ways and get them engaged instead of just listening to a lecture, but they need to be prepared, because the technology that's out there, I mean, when I was in school, we did computer labs. We had to learn to type and, you know, play with the avoid-the-oid games or whatever they were. But the kids can't be prepared to be productive of humans when they're older, if they're, they don't know the technology that's out there. So, iPads, right now, it seems like this is the most, um, current technology, but five years from now, who knows? There might be something more ingenious that's more helpful or a different way for the kids to learn. So, just keeping on top of, not necessarily trends, because it's not a trendy thing, whatever's out there, making sure that we're using technology responsibly and not just going and buying a thousand new laptops or whatever the case may be. But making sure that we're using it in a way that we are, that it's being used in classrooms now to teach the kids, but also make sure that they're, they're tech-savvy enough to, to function when they get to high school and beyond.
Thank you. Our fifth question, Mr. Rush, if we could start with you? Oh, oh, Mr. Herring. I am so very sorry. Please, could you answer our technology initiative question?
Thank you. I might be Debbie Downer here, because I, if I'm not the oldest one up here, I'm probably the second-oldest one up here, and I'm a bit more old-school. I'm not anti-technology. Um, I, I like the, the pace that, that the district has taken. Um, as mentioned earlier, that Dr. Cucci and, and her staff, you know, they've looked at things, and they've analyzed what they felt would be best for the kids, for the district. And, and the board has acted, I thought, appropriately. Phasing in and getting it to, uh, the ratio, I believe, is two-to-one, and with an ultimate goal of maybe getting it one-to-one eventually. I, I like that approach, because technology is so expensive. Uh, it's come down, but it's still, it's still a big chunk of money. And I know at home, there's that, there's been, over the years, been the frustration of just, you know, trying to keep up with the latest gizmo or the latest software or whatever. And I don't want that to become a detraction from the educational process, uh, the interaction between students, between student and teacher, and so forth. Um, it's been my understanding that there's been research that our kids' brains develop differently now because of all the technology that they're exposed to. And there's also now been some studies started that what, well, what long terms effect, uh, will this have on the kids when they're in their later teens and young adults? You know, how will that change things? Not necessarily good or bad, but how will things be different for them? So, I, I think we need to be cognizant of the impact that this is having on us. Um, again, I don't wanna rule it out. I, I like the approach the district has had, but, um, I guess proceed cautiously is, is how I would look at it. I mean, if it can help us, if it can help the teachers and the kids, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize again, Mr. Herring. Very sorry. Mr. Rush, if you could start us off on our fifth question. With a property tax freeze looming, potentially causing budget cuts, what can we do to keep in step with salaries and benefits of other districts and retain our excellent staff?
Um, I think that the district has done a great job so far, and the current board has done a great job, um, with saving, I think Mr. Adair said, three million dollars in budget cuts over, over the last few years, um, whatever it would be. Uh, I think that the, the board and the administration has done a wonderful job in, you know, maintaining the success of the students, maintaining the staff. Um, and, you know, like I said, I, I, I'm, would be new to this. I know, um, two current, current board members have been here, and, you know, it's kind of a, uh, learn-on-the-job process of, you know, you go to administration and leave decisions up to administration, and hopefully they're giving you the, you know, uh, right suggestions, um, as to what cuts could be made. Um, I know as a teacher, what I think may be the right cuts and looking at, you know, Dr. Manville, Dr. Cucci, or whoever from administration would be recommending cuts, I would, you know, look at those carefully and, and see what the best, worst-case scenario would be for staff, for resources, for projects, things like that. I think you just need to prioritize what it would be. So, um, I, I think doing those things would hopefully help to retain excellent staff, um, not have to, you know, cut, cut staff members, those happened in the past, um, and keep up with, you know, current districts and, in the area.
Thank you. Mrs. Starkoff?
Well, if it happens, it's going to affect all school districts, you know, so that would be, you'd have to pay attention to what other districts were doing as well, and seeing, you know, how they're retaining their staff, the salaries that they're offering, you know, if they choose to freeze or not, the sal, you know, the salaries in that situation. But what really came to mind when I was reading this was, um, the need for open dialogue between the staff members and administration and everyone, you know, they need to be aware of what's going on. And it, it had me think about, um, you know, insurance costs and how this year, the union and everyone with the administration, they worked hard to, you know, work out a plan to make the insurance costs, um, not go up as much, you know, and stuff like that. And I think it would be something similar to that, where we'd have to really work together to be creative and, um, find ways where, yeah, every area, every avenue might have to give a little, you know, um, but to come up with almost a compromise so that no one feels completely slighted. And you'd, you know, you'd also wanna just kinda keep the morale up, because I don't think it always just comes down to pay. You know, you wanna come to school because you work with good people, you, you're, you have good leaders, you have good principals, you have, um, great students, all that stuff. So, you know, you'd, you'd kinda work together to keep that, and just knowing that we were all kinda going through a tough time in other districts as well, if that situation happens.
Thank you. Mr. Adair?
Well, the, uh, as the question proposes there, the potential of budget cuts because of a property tax freeze that, uh, is being proposed, I'm not a proponent of, of that, because I, I feel that that is just a temporary measure, unless there was things that were in that agreement that would decrease or continue that, uh, freeze in a way that it's not affecting our school district. Because again, what, you save a little bit, um, you're gonna have to make up to some extent. So, I'm not a real proponent of the tax freeze. I'm, I'm more a proponent as to getting the state budget in, in line. Uh, we face a pension problem, a, um, so, uh, workman's comp issues. So, we have, we have some issues there that, that really affect, uh, everything as to what we're doing. But I believe that, uh, we should pay our teachers, and we have been paying our teachers, a comparative, uh, salary to the surrounding communities. I think it is important to retain qualified, uh, teachers, and as, uh, Rhonda has said, that we're all part of a family here. And, uh, I just relate back to my days in working, that, uh, I started a, a company that came from Europe, and I grew the company with another gentleman, and we grew it into thirty-some people. And it was tough, uh, didn't get what I thought I should've got, but the, working with the people and what we were doing, I think, was very important. Now, I don't ask all you teachers to sacrifice, uh, like I did, but, uh, in a way. Uh, but, again, I, I, I see as a board that we're willing to, uh, make the salaries and, uh, the conditions comparable to, uh, any other school, and we would want to retain the qualified teachers by doing that. But again, a big part of any, uh, issues that we face in funding, a big part, again, comes from the state. Again, we're only down to two-point-nine million dollars in state aid, and again, that was up in the nine million dollars years ago, so...
That's two minutes, Mr. Adair.
Oh, it was?
Yet more.
I didn't have my clock running, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Burkey?
Well, to piggyback off of what Mrs. Starkoff said, it's really about dialogue, because there's a really good chance of that happening, but there's also, you never know, a really good chance of the people in Springfield coming up with a budget and sometime soon. So, we don't know what's gonna happen. When it does happen and it comes down the pipeline, then we assess, and we see where we stand, and we see what we can cut, just with, like, like, uh, what he said before. With the cuts that have been made, there've been a ton of cuts, but they weren't crazy cuts. They were responsible and they were, they were measured. It wasn't, let's, you know, fire all the, half of the fourth-grade teachers. It was, they're, they're cuts where they're reasonable. And assessing where we stand just every six months with a five-year plan, assessing constantly and seeing, and then keeping the open dialogue. Because, like was also said, it's not just gonna be New Lennox that suffers if Springfield decides to try and ruin our line. decides to try and ruin our lives. It's going to be everybody around. So also making sure that there is communication when, as soon as we know what goes on and how it's going to potentially affect the rest of the district, the school, the teachers and the administration, just keeping open dialogue. Because open dialogue helps avoid conflict. When there's misunderstandings or misinformation, that's when some animosity could potentially arise, and we don't want that to happen. So open lines of communication and taking into consideration all the different perspectives because we have to make sure the buildings don't crumble as well. But there's no point in having beautiful buildings if we can't keep teachers to teach in them, so. That's, that's.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
I like, sorry. I like this question because the earlier one about the tax levy, that's, that's one reason why I think we need to keep the tax levy at its max. So that when, if that time comes, we have locally enough support, as much support as we can for our school. I mean, we all know about how the state of Illinois is struggling and, you know, it was a year or half a year or whatever its payments to the district were behind. And you never know from one year to the next how much money the state is going to supply the district. So to me, keeping the levy at its max is a key. From what I understand, from what I've read, that the property tax freeze would be, right now, linked up with some kind of income tax increase or some other statewide increase in a tax. And as I said earlier, I would rather have the money stay here than go outside our community. And as far as what can we do to keep in step, as was mentioned, I would concur, keep communication. Bring all parties in and say, let's brainstorm, what can we do here? We got to work something out. I know some districts in rural Illinois, they've gone to doing advertising and bringing in dollars that way. I wouldn't want to see our schools become billboards, not literally, but I would like to keep them as, you know, clean as possible and not have advertising or some of those other things to try to raise funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Mr. Hall?
State budget cuts affect all districts. Our district, we actually even have, we have a surplus now, which is wonderful. It helps us keep the quality schools that we have, which will keep the quality educators. And, you know, like I said, with potential budget cuts, I mean, the property tax freeze is a proposed, it's kind of, you know, a hypothetical. We'll see what happens. Pray to God it doesn't happen. But, you know, if it does, we just have to live within our means to keep our quality schools. And like was said earlier, just communicate. Everybody come to the table, put forth their ideas, and we'll work it out. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last question, Mrs. Starklof, if you could start us off with this one. What is the number one issue facing our district today? How would you address this issue?
Well, I would say the unknown, you know, budgetary concerns that the state of Illinois is currently faced with. And, you know, the problem with it is that we have seen, and, you know, Mr. Gruce has put out countless scenarios of what-ifs, you know, and we are all sitting in limbo with all of these possible what-ifs, and it makes it a little stressful and unknown for that because then it piggybacks into, oh, you know, we want to keep maintaining our facilities and make these improvements, but we can't, you know, put 100% backing into it because we don't know what the state's going to do. So I think our biggest issue right now is, is the unknown. And unfortunately, in addressing it, you know, we really can't do anything until the bills, if a bill is passed or if a new bill is put forward and passed, you know. But all we can do right now, and our team has done a great job with it, is try and stay current. You know, they're constantly, Dr. Manville is constantly sending out information about new press releases, new information that the state is putting out there. So all we can do is stay current on all of the possibilities that could happen. But again, it's just like a million scenarios out there, and you're hoping for the best of the worst in a lot of them. And it's a stressful time in terms of finances and scary with that, but we just have to keep moving forward and keep doing what we're doing, keeping our quality of education where it is.
Thank you. Mr. Adair?
I would ditto what Rhonda has said in that the budget, the state budget, is one of the biggest concerns that we have here in the district, as all different things that have been proposed. A lot of them really are going to affect, if some of them are incorporated or passed, it's going to affect our schools greatly because we're sort of considered as a school district that can sustain itself. So with that thinking, as we have seen through our assessed evaluations, they, the state has cut our school aid, and some of the things that they're proposing, whether it's in pensions or things that will fall back onto the school district, that's going to affect naturally how we operate. Now, Mr. Gruce, our business manager, has, again, as Rhonda has said, has presented some ideas and things like this, but again, the scenarios aren't that great, so we're going to have to face some things if some of these things come to pass. But all the things that they've been proposing, in a way, are going to affect this, us. Now, they want to increase the income tax rate, okay, that, in a way, whether you take it out of your left pocket or you take it out of your right pocket, you're still losing money. I think, again, structurally, the state has a lot of things that have to be resolved. And so I think that's the biggest concern is really the state. I think we can operate here for about three years without the state, and, but then we come to crunch time and we're going to have to do something. But again, it doesn't look too favorable optimistically, I'm hoping.
Thank you, Mr. Adair. Ms. Berkey?
So this is going to sound like I'm copying their homework, but it's Springfield is our problem because, for all of the reasons that have been said, so there's no point in me repeating everything, but I think even more so knowing that there's going to be some sort of change, that we just don't know what it is. So the business manager giving a bunch of different scenarios for what could happen, what if, what if, he's spending his time doing that, which is fantastic and helpful and useful, but the fact that Springfield is making, making us spend our time on this is really just ridiculous, and I do hope for the sake of us all that it ends soon and we at least know where to go. But the other issue is that I think it's going, not issue, it's going to be a challenge and maybe a positive one, to see how the district reacts with whatever happens. Because if we get absolutely no state funding, okay, we know where we're working, where we're starting from, and how to proceed from there is going to be an issue, but I think it'll be, it's not insurmountable. So I think at this point, just the state of limbo that we're all in with the, where are we going to be a year or five years from now with the finance, the finance situation, it's just going to be interesting to see. So I would say Springfield is our biggest issue.
Thank you. Mr. Herring?
You know, I look at Springfield as the big bad wolf, but they have their issues too. But to address it, I think the school district has already been on a good path of addressing it. As was mentioned earlier, I think Teresa mentioned how there were measured actions that have already been taken in past years that have allowed the district to have a surplus. But I think we all know that if the district is ever totally on its own, that surplus could evaporate very quickly. So how to address the issue? I guess get involved politically and try to get Springfield to get their act together. And then also locally, to continue the work the school has done, the board, the board members, Dr. Manville and staff, that have looked down the road and they've looked at staffing needs, where the staff is at. Are there going to be retirements? They've looked at funding issues. So I would say for them to keep up what they've been doing. And kudos to Mr. Gruce because of all the scenarios he's put together and the analysis that he has done. That's, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I could also go the one-word answer and say Springfield, which it is true. But let me go another route, too. I always kind of fall back to what I know, the construction side of it and the aging schools that we have. With the question in funding and possible cuts, we still need to do these things. We can't have schools that are falling down around the children. And so basically, we just need to sit down and pinch every penny, basically, when it comes to getting bids. I saw the bid work for the roof projects that are being done this next summer, and it was wonderful to see how many people, you know, how many different contractors we got to, you know, when we bid it out. It was great. But some things in some other bids that I've seen, you kind of got to look at it from a different point. You might save a dollar here. Like I said, knowing construction, I know how trades work. You don't always go with the low bidder on jobs. It looks great on paper. Oh, wow, these guys came in super cheap. Well, they're going to hit you with extras come the end of the job. So kind of what I want to get back to with pinching every penny and knowing what's, you know, coming down the pipe, roofs, all these HVAC systems in the four old schools is going to be pricey. You know, so living within our means and, you know, Springfield is its own animal. We end up having to deal with what happens, but, you know, we'll manage. The district is healthy. You know, yes, we have a huge budget, but, you know, with the surplus and, you know, and like everybody said, kind of running on our own for at least a little while, but, okay, I'll call it quits. But definitely the construction side of it, we really got to make sure all these, you know, everything is done on the buildings to keep them up.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
I get the last one here, and everybody said the same thing. I like it. I also would agree that the number one issue is probably, you know, the financial status of the district versus the state budget and what's happening in Springfield. I do like, it sounds like the district and the Board of Education Administrators are planning for all scenarios and trying to be prepared just in case anything happens. And, you know, I like the fact that they, they meet and they reassess frequently and go over, you know, what's working, what's not working, you know, what can be changed. So that's, self-assessing is good. I like that. I also like something that maybe might address the issue or that is addressing the issue is I like the fact that the, they're using creativity and applying for different grants, different funds. I know my district does the same thing. They send us things for, you know, apply for technology grants, funds, things like that. And I know that staff members in New Lennox are also applying for grants, funds to help their classroom, help the district also. I think addressing it continues with, you know, using the administrator's knowledge of, to guide the district in, you know, the budget and in finances. They've done a great job so far, working with the board and maintaining a balanced budget, you know, obviously having a surplus. So I think they've been prepared for anything and hopefully will continue to.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our questions for the evening. And on behalf of New Lennox District 122 Teachers Union, we'd like to thank you all again for coming out and for your honesty and sharing your thoughts and ideas with us. And thank you to the audience, too, for joining us this evening, and please remember to vote on Tuesday, April 4th. Please enjoy the rest of your evening and drive safely. Thank you.
I wasn't done.